And I'll hand the meeting over to Mr. Snyder and Mr. Gardner.
Very good. We're Barry Go.
Sorry.
Really, really, really excited to have Barry Gardner with Policy Analytics with us this evening. And I know Barry, through his own introduction, that he's uniquely qualified to do this because he's been a chief financial officer for Brownsburg and the Dennis Davis School Corporation. I never remember which townships they are. I'm not an Indy person. But those are two very large districts. So not only does he understand property tax, assessed value, and how those things work, but he also has a great perspective on school funding and how schools work and that impact it has on schools. So, super excited to be working with them. And Barry, I'm just gonna turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening. Appreciate the chance to chat with the board here tonight. Really informal, so please don't hesitate to ask questions throughout as we're going through this and interrupt with anything you may wonder. So as Mr. Snyder mentioned, so yes, my background, I spent 23 years in public education. The last 10 really in the school finance world as CFO and then Assistant Superintendent for Finance at MSD Wayne. And then made the transition to Policy Analytics just a little over a year ago. I've worked with them for a number of years. And so, Policy Analytics, just a little bit about the firm. Policy Analytics has been around for about 20 years. We're based out of downtown Indianapolis and really kind of fit into this unique space. We do really economic analysis for governmental units. So cities, towns, counties, the state of Indiana, in really unique situations around property taxes and tax impacts. And so, that's what the firm has been doing for the last 20 years. Really got involved in schools in 2009-ish when the property tax caps came into place with the 1%, 2%, and 3%. Because that started impacting a number of school districts and other governmental units, you know, quite a bit. And so, we work with just shy about 60 school districts across the state of Indiana. From all the way, you know, here down in southern Indiana to northern Indiana of all sizes. And so, bring a little bit of that perspective into this. Tonight is just really to look at kind of the changing situation here potentially in terms of the district's assessed value. What that means for the school corporation, but also maybe what it means in turn for the local taxpayer. Because there's a couple of components there. And so, we'll walk through a little bit of that tonight and at least give a little bit of insight of where that is starting to look like. So, I did want to take just a brief moment, and I apologize, I'm not trying to over explain things, but traveling around, I know not everyone loves talking property taxes probably all that much at times. And there's some unique mechanics to it, and I think it's beneficial for our kind of corporation. And so, in a general sense, the way property tax, excuse me, the way the assessed value system works is it's based on market value data. Okay? That was defined by a Supreme Court case that Indiana has a market value system in terms of assessed value. So, simple way sometimes to get at home prices, right? Typically, where home prices are or are going or have been going is going to impact assessed value. So, the way it works is there's also a little bit of a two-year lag. So, the district just received its 25 budget year, 25 assessed value, right? And we saw the decline, we'll get into that piece within it. That was based on 2023 calendar year sales data. So, the assessor looks at sales data over calendar year 23, takes the first half of 24 to do their assessment and to evaluate that, and then provides the actual assessment for districts, dotted schools, but other governmental units for the 25 budget year. So, we often like to also tell people, we have a little bit of lens of what may be coming in a couple of years if we're paying attention to it, right? So, you know, if we're looking at housing sale data currently, we kind of know what that's starting to mean for 2026. Because we're good portion through 2024, that will actually impact 26 assessed value. So, there's a little bit of this delay that gives us some time, if we're paying attention to, to have some sense of where that's going. Sorry, this turned out really small within this piece. So, I'll walk through some of the figures. The other piece we look at when we talk about a school district's assessed value is the makeup, okay? What are the various tax classifications that make up the overall assessed value? Most districts are very residential, which is that red that I know it's a little hard to see, okay? So, Danville on the left is a 77% residential, you know, so that means the majority of their district's AVE comes from homes. And it's capped at the 1%. So typically, if you like a Danville, they deal with some circuit breaker issue where they don't collect all of their property tax revenue because a taxpayer can only pay so much, right? And when that taxpayer hits the cap, they can't pay anymore, okay? We wanted to often see some of these districts off to the right, which what we call a pretty diverse tax-based composition. Because they not just have the 1%, but they may have a 2% with the agriculture, and then they have the 3% with commercial or personal property. And those are important because again, there's a higher tax threshold within those that allows the district to generate some additional revenue, right? And really what assessed value means is your ability to generate revenue. That's really what helps you do. The higher your assessed value per student or kind of piece, the more capacity you have to generate revenue. The lower it is, the more difficult often to generate those revenues. So, we want to take a look at this, right? Then there's a mechanic of how assessed value works in terms of a tax rate, okay? And so, the simple math problem in term, talking of revenue, is you take the assessed value of the district, you multiply it times the tax rate, and that gives you your revenue, okay? So, in this case, what it's, these are, it's a larger district in this piece, but it's taking the 2.8 billion, it's multiplying it times the 90 cent tax rate and gets 25.2 million revenue, okay? Now, each year you get a new assessed value amount. If assessed value goes up, like on the second line, the tax rate can go down and still generate the same amount of revenue, okay? The way the math problem kind of works. The other is, if the assessed value goes up to the 300, or 3 billion in that third line, and you multiply it times that same original tax rate of 90 cents, you can actually generate more revenue, okay? So, that's what districts sometimes will do, right? Is they may work to a tax rate. They'll keep the tax rate similar, and then each year as assessed value grows, they generate a little bit more revenue to deal with inflationary costs and those pieces. The last line is probably one we're talking about as much here. Is, in order to generate a similar amount of revenue, when AV goes down, your tax rate has to go up, okay? And so, as assessed value goes down, if I want to generate that necessary revenue, I have to push up the tax rate to do, to make that math work, let's say. I don't have to push up the tax rate, but to make that math work, to generate that additional revenue, I do, okay? So, that's kind of this push-pull that we're talking about. And that's what we're going to see a little bit as we work our way through this data. The other piece that happens, and this is really in relation to your operations fund, because two of your funds are funded by property taxes. Your debt service and your operations fund. Your debt service, you have control over. The board approves what the overall levy and rate would be based on the district's needs, and you really work with the district leadership to set that. The operations fund is what we call a maximum levy fund, okay? It grows each year by what we call the MLGQ, which is the maximum levy growth quotient. County, city governments also have funds that grow by this maximum levy growth quotient, okay? Right now, it's capped at 4%, okay? So, there's a similar math problem, because we just don't have enough math problems yet, so we're going to add some more with this, right? But basically, what it says is, if your assessed value comes in at 4% and the MLGQ is 4%, your operations fund rate's going to stay the same. It's going to stay right where it's at through the following year. If assessed value comes in greater than the MLGQ, your operations fund rate goes down. And this is one you don't have control over, because all you're able to do is to max the levy, okay, within that piece. The last, and again, kind of similar pieces we're talking, is assessed value comes in less than the MLGQ, your operations fund has to go up to generate those dollars, okay? So, those are some of the mechanics that we're dealing with in here as we talk about the assessed value impact on tax rates and on revenues at any corporation across the state, and really for a lot of other governmental units as well, right? Okay, so let's do a little look here at some South Spencer data that we've been working with to kind of pull and paint a little bit of a local picture within this. So, one of the first things we do at Policy Analytics is to really start to outline the school district boundaries, the various taxing districts within that, and their rates, okay? And so, you can see the various taxing districts on the bottom right there. And then we've also layered and shown the overlapping units, we often call them. So, the county, the township, the town, the school, all of those stack on top of each other, and you can see the different colors and rates, right? This is important because depending on your rate, what your rate is determines if you have circuit breaker impact. And again, just to define circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is that money that's not collected the above a homeowner's required amount. So, simple math, if my home's worth $100,000, I can only pay $1,000 in taxes, not just to the school, to all units. If all the units raise their tax rates and they say, hey, you owe us $2,000, nope, I can only pay 1%, and I only pay that $1,000. The other dollars that we talked about just go uncollected. That's what we call circuit breaker loss, right? You don't have much circuit breaker loss here in the district. We typically see it above, when a rate starts to get above $2 overall. And you do have a couple of places where you do see a rate that's over $2. However, 80% of your assessed value falls in Ohio Township, 78.5, let's call it 80. Falls in Ohio Township, which is at $1.24, well below that threshold where we start talking circuit breaker. That's a good thing, because when you have circuit breaker, you don't collect all the dollars, right? So, when you don't have circuit breaker, that means you're going to collect your full share of those dollars. So, that's a positive as we look at that. So, that's one of the first checks that we want to look at. The next is pie that I alluded to earlier, okay? So, this is actual South Spencer School District assessed value composition. On the left was 24 budget year. We call it Pay 24, where the taxes are paid within. And you can see the district was 47% personal property, which is capped at the 3%, and about 36% residential. When we move to the 25 budget year, with the drop in assessed value in the personal property space, you can see that the personal property as a piece of this pie has dropped by about 17, 16, 17%. And your residential has gotten a lot bigger. You haven't added any homes, right? They just make up a bigger portion of that pie. And this roughly represents who's bringing money to the table. It is a simplistic way to look at it, right? AV kind of in a rough sense equals dollars for local governmental units. And what we're looking at is what portion of those dollars come from where? And so, kind of hinting at where we're headed here, right? We're seeing a shift in the residential, that the residential units are going to have a bigger portion of that pie that they're bringing those dollars to the table than they paid in 24. And this is just the simple math of the assessed value that's in the community that ebbs and flows. You actually also had a pretty strong residential growth. The gross assessed value change for residential was 9% for this year. That's really pretty robust. That's reflective again of what we've been seeing in housing prices. Again, as housing prices go up, assessed value goes up. So, there's a component of that that's playing out in this calculation as well, okay? When we look then, and we were asked just to look at this potentially if the power plant completely goes offline in terms of some of the assessed value components, this is that kind of look to say, okay, what does it look like come budget year 29? And so, now we go from 25 to 29, and you can get, see, residential get a lot bigger. And that's simply, again, it's not because you're adding new homes. We don't have a residential build-out that we're saying South Spencer's going to keep adding 50 homes a year. It's the personal property dollars that are coming to the table are getting smaller, so everyone else has to chip in more. There's really the math behind that, okay? And that's at least where we're seeing things right now. And again, there's some, we have to make some projections in terms of what we think assessed value's going to grow.
How do you, what do you use to come up with that projection?
Yeah, great question. So, we use a number of different sources. So, one, our software is what we call parcel base. So, when we look at South Spencer, we're able to look at every single piece of property and every parcel from homes to businesses across the board. We have a 15-year database of history. So, one, we're able to look back at the historical change of what's been happening and what's been going on in the economy. The other is we pull housing data, especially that's the big piece with this residential-wise. I was telling Mr. Snyder on the way down, we actually updated some numbers. Housing data continues to be stronger than what we projected. So, we have actually upped our, what we call our trending assessed value, up by about a percentage point because housing prices aren't plateauing like we thought they might. So, we use median sales price across counties. We use some different census data with those pieces. And then, there's a farmland calculation that's provided by the state. So, when you look at agriculture, there's two pieces to it. There's the farm, the building, that's taxed in one classification. And then you have the farmland, the actual crops, and that's taxed at a different calculation. And that farmland actually has a state mandated role in six-year average calculation, okay? So, if I've not lost it yet, I'm sure I'm going to here in a second with all these pieces, right? But, let me finish this, and I'll turn. All of those things go into what we're looking at and making these projections.
So, this projection is based on a drop-dead date of this AEP projection of 28. So, if six months, a year, a year and a half prior, one of the units goes offline, and those people have to find work outside of the, is there anything that projects into that? Or is this just straight a single diagnostic projected AV rate for a drop-dead?
So, right now, it has two components. It has the 25, which we know we saw some of that fall off.
Correct.
And it has the kind of drop-dead date that you're referring to at that point.
Okay.
We've started there as a starting point, and that was some of the conversation that we had, and I think amongst this group, right? The more data we have moving forward, and if we can know more, we can start to model that out in this piece as we have more information along those times.
Okay.
Great question as we work through this. One of the big pieces that makes up your AV is also your housing prices and the gross assessed value. So, as that red gets bigger, right, we look more at the residential piece. And as typical for a lot of communities across the state, 2015 to 2020, we didn't see a whole lot of change in home prices, and so residential assessed value didn't change. You've seen a little bit of a run-up here in the county or in the district the last few years in terms of home prices, in terms of gross assessed value. So, this shows the median home gross assessed value is 138,000, meaning that person could pay 1,380 in property taxes. I'll tell you, that's pretty low. It's on the lower end, I'd say, compared to what we might see across the state. It's upwards of 200 or more in a lot of places. And that's just capacity that can be paid, right? This starts to factor in, I'm going to go back a slide, as this starts to change, right? Because as more of the payment need starts to fall on the homeowners, we go back to, they have a limit of what they can pay. And so, once we start hitting that limit, there's dollars that may not be able to come to the table. Question is, how much? And that's one of the things we're going to show here in a second. This is also where we kind of see the overall district's assessed value going in the future. We're going to parse this in a couple of different slides. So, the blue line is kind of that historic. You can see the drop-off there from 24 to 25, from the 983 to the 810 in terms of overall assessed value. We have an underlying piece that we see it growing by about 2.5% annually. When we then look at, back to that piece, that question, that 2029, that's where we see that next level of fall-off, that the assessed value for the community would drop to that 612 million and then start to trend up from there. So, that's roughly what it looks like in terms of AV change over time. This is another chart that just shows in a different form. The blue is the historic piece. The orange is where Policy Analytics starts to see us project moving forward for the district. And so, the next few years, we've got some decent trending growth. And then you can see eventually we start to pull back, because we know at some point there's always a little bit of a pullback in the housing market. And as you get more residential, you become more sensitive to that, right? This doesn't show, the next slide will show the fall-off in 2029. The other piece that's playing into this, and it doesn't impact you, so I won't get into the whole weeds, but I'll set it up for some potential, is, it says House Bill 1499. House Bill 1499 was passed by the legislators this past spring that changed the supplemental deduction on homes from 35% to 40%. So, if you're a homeowner, you have two deductions. You have a standard deduction of 48,000, and you have a 35% supplemental. They were worried about property taxes being high, so they increased the deduction to 40%, which means at the end of the day, you would pay less. That came on in 24. It goes to 37.5 in 25 and 35% in 26, okay? So, we have this playing, and again, it doesn't impact the district a whole lot within this. I set that up to say, they're also talking about additional changes to the property tax system. If you've been paying attention, you've probably heard all three candidates for governor throw out property tax reform of some kind. That could impact everything that we're talking about here in terms of this place, depending on what they do. They're talking about reforming the way property taxes are driven, I think to create some homeowner relief. Your debt service and your operations fund are funded by property taxes. So, if they change the way we get to those figures, it's going to have impact on this. And so, just something again to be aware of. This is just that same slide, just shows that fall-off. So, this year, we saw about 17.5%. You can see if it all came off there in 29. It's about another 33% drop in terms of assessed value year-over-year change, all right? So, the next thing we start to look at is what's the impact for the school district? And this represents revenue that the district has currently received and would potentially receive, right? So, the blue bar is the operations fund net levy, and this is in millions. So, in 2024, it was 4.4 million. The debt service levy or revenue is in the orange, and that was 1.3 million, okay? The operations fund, a couple of mechanics here. The operations fund, right now, we're projecting to grow by the MLGQ, which we're projecting right out 4% moving forward. So, that's why you see the blue, at least from 24 to 28, continue to grow. The orange stays at the 1.3 the entire time. That's us making the assumption for now to say, you're going to keep the same amount of debt service revenue coming in each year. Now, that may mean that as old debt falls off with some of the potential projects, you could issue new bonds and kind of fill in that gap. But we've just protected that there because we know districts often have capital needs and need to do repairs and work around the buildings, and you may need some capacity for bonds, right? That could change. Again, that orange is really up to the board where you set that levy amount. Okay, so the gray at the top now gets into circuit breaker loss. You really don't have hardly, you can't even see really any circuit breaker loss in the first 24 to 27. We start to see it come on a little bit in 28, but especially in 29, when we have that additional fall-off in assessed value. And the math behind it really says, if we didn't have that fall-off, and it's not dollar for dollar, but you could almost add the 5.5 to the 4.9. And it would have said, you would have received 5.4 in the operations fund in 2029, but now we would project you only receive 4.9. So, you have a little bit of drawdown, and then it kind of stays flat. I will tell you, these figures are better, and a little bit of caution, these figures are better now than our initial run because we bumped up that assessed value, trending assessed value. The better your assessed value comes in each year, the better these numbers would look. If we have a drawback in housing, or we start to have a pullback in the economy, then you could start to see some additional circuit breaker impact, okay? And so, this is our best assumptions now. I do think it's something for the district to keep an eye on, given all of the moving parts that we're talking about here tonight in terms of the next five years, right, of what that may look like. But this is our best estimate now within that. So, we wanted to give some context, right? Because we often talk these big numbers, and what do they mean comparative to some other districts? So, a few slides here along this way. This is net assessed value for students, and it's similar ADMs, so similar school sizes, right? And it can be all over the state, but we just pulled similar-sized school districts. We talk about net assessed value per student because it's a metric we can actually compare across districts somewhat fairly well. And again, the more assessed value you have per student, the more revenue you can generate at a lower tax rate, okay? The less assessed value you have per student, you're going to have to have a higher tax rate in order to generate those dollars, okay? So, I know it's a little hard, but on the far left is the 2024 assessed value per student, at $954,000 per student. The state average is in the middle at 454,000. So, your assessed value per student currently is almost twice the state average. That's a really positive thing, okay? When we look at what it looks like in 2029, it comes down to 594,000. But again, that's still in what we, the 75th percentile of state, so still really strong. Again, that's a positive, because this has a correlation of how much revenue you're going to be able to generate when it comes to your operations fund. Tax rates, this is probably the biggest one, right? Probably needs the biggest consideration or just awareness. So, property tax rates, and this is just school alone. If you go back and think back to when we had the earlier charge, we had the stacking of all the other units. This right now is just the schools. Far right, and again, this is that correlation, right? I said this earlier. The higher your assessed value per student, you can have a much lower tax rate and still generate your necessary revenue. So, you're on that 58 cent tax rate at the far right. State average is right around 96, 97 cents. When we look at 2029, the school district's tax rate, keeping the revenues and assumptions of those two funds the same, would go up to a dollar nine, okay? So, there would be a pretty significant tax rate increase. Because again, we've, if you think back, and I wish I had those posters bigger, as assessed value goes down, we have to push up the tax rate to generate the same amount of revenue. That's the math that's playing out here, okay? But relatively speaking, and I think this is a contextual piece, not far above the state average overall. You've just had a really extremely low tax rate here in the district comparatively to the state. And again, that's because of that AV composition and that AV per student, right? So, that's allow the district to generate the revenue it needs and have a low tax rate overall. When we look at circuit breaker loss, this is again, the money that you don't collect per student. So, right now, there is a little bit of circuit breaker loss, and it's kind of there in the middle. It's $43 per student that you don't collect in property tax revenue for the district. When we look at 2029, it's $459. So, that's a pretty big jump, right? Sometimes people get really worked up over this. Where I like to spend a little more time though is what's your actual revenue? And so, this is a little bit to walk through. The bottom blue, we'll call it, is the operations fund net levy per student. The purple is the state tuition support. Last year, every district in the state gets the same amount of dollars per student at the state tuition, the basic grant. The kind of darkish purple is complexity dollars per student. So, that's typically associated with SNAP, TANA, free reduced lunch, and then the And then the tuition support, the light ish purple at the top is what we call categorical. So that's special education dollars, academic honors, all those kind of lumped into one. We're focused here a little bit more on the property tax piece, right? The state average, you can see in the middle there on the property tax, the operations fund specifically is $1,800 per student. Currently, South Spencer Schools receives $3,900 per student in the operations fund. So you are funded above the state average when it comes to the operations fund. Now, sometimes I think there's a piece to consider, and this is where I think putting that school finance hat. There is a component of being a small rural district in terms of operations funds and running your buildings that I, and challenges that I did not have running a large urban district in Indianapolis. I had 800 students in an elementary school with a principal, a nurse, custodial staff. You may have 200 or 300 in an elementary. So we had economies of scale that $1,800 could go a lot farther for us than they could here in a district like like South Spencer. And that's the case with a lot of our rural schools across the state. We don't talk about that enough, I think, or have that understanding in schools, that density matters, right? The number of students you can have in a singular building or you can have under that operational funding. So I say that to not say that you're overfunded in that sense. It's a different mechanism than when you compare across the state within that. Small schools, less than 2,500 students, we just ran this recently, I think it was around $2,400 was the average. So again, it starts to creep up more towards your direction when you look at similar sized kind of districts across the state. When we look at 2029, you actually still see an increase in that dollars per student. So what this would say, at least, is the reduction in assessed value does not impact the district's ability to generate the revenue that it probably needs. Now, there's some pressure, right? What's inflation grow by over the next several years within that piece, right? Because we're growing that by that 4% to account for inflation. But it's not like this move comes in and wipes out $1,900 per student and really changes the dynamic of what you're able to do.
But isn't that based on the same level of enrollment? You know, as a business were to shut down or leave a community, you would, you would probably have a reduction in people in the community because those people are displaced to find employment elsewhere. So your number of enrollment would go down, correct? So that's based on if everybody that's in the district currently stayed in the district based on that 62, 35 per person. So the percent per student is projected to be the same, but the actual number looking at it at the end of the, at the end of the day could be much less because the number of students could be less in your district, right?
A couple things here. The operations fund, I want to stay there for a second. The operations fund is a maximum levy. So if your enrollment goes down, that $4,700 would actually go up.
Right, but the the middle purple piece that's reflective there.
That's the education fund.
Right, so as, so as your op, your operating cost obviously is based on your projections, but your number per student would stay the same, but your number of enrollment could affect that.
Could change, which might impact your ed fund.
Correct.
Yes, and so, yes, if this leaves and you have people leave, the dollars follow the students.
Right, so it's kind of a dual edged sword.
It doesn't do it on the ops fund, at least right now, operations fund dollars don't follow the student. The purples towards the top, those dollars follow the student. So you would have a conversation on your ed fund side when it comes to staffing, number of teachers, all those kinds of things. Yes, you're exactly right. So yeah, it's kind of this weird piece, this weird dynamic where one fund is impacted, but the other is is not within those pieces. Yeah, great question. So I think, so kind of pausing here, so right now, we look at the school piece. Again, this is keeping similar assumptions in terms of revenue growth moving forward, right? So now when we look at this implication, this is a chart that we run for a lot, for all of our school districts, right? And what we're trying to determine is what we call sometimes tax, tax rate sensitivity or levy sensitivity. And at the end of the day, where are the dollars coming from? So the way this works is for every dollar that you would potentially increase in debt service levy, and I know this is an exercise to show the impact. What it says is you're actually going to collect, keep 99 cents of that, which is a really high figure. A lot of districts raise the dollar and may only keep 60 cents overall. Because you give up, in this case, the green, the circuit breaker loss is a penny here, meaning you gotta give up a penny of every dollar out of your operations fund. So you're getting money in one pocket and you're kind of giving out of the other. Where does that dollar come from? Well, you give a penny, all the other governmental units give two pennies, and the other 99 cents come from taxpayers, homeowners, businesses, agriculture. So what this chart really says is you are very tax rate sensitive. Your taxpayers are very tax rate sensitive. So as the tax rates move, so do their tax bills. So now as we start to look, we do have some data, right? I think this is a helpful look because we do have some things we know are happening, right? So based on the assessed value for 2025, and if the district again maxes out their operations fund levy, which most districts do on a annual basis, and keeping the debt service levy the same, the school district's rate for '25 is going to go from 58 cents to 73 cents, and you've not done anything different. That's the function of the math behind this because the assessed value has gone down. When we step back and we say, okay, let's look at an impact on a taxpayer. The first column is their '24 bill. So we took the median home price, the 138,000, we showed the two deductions. We just kept the math simple on the 35% deduction for now. You're actually taxed on your net assessed value. Bottom line is that taxpayer is paying $651 in in taxes in 2024. If we had not seen the change in assessed value, because you did have some growth, we hadn't seen the change, I should say, in the personal property assessed value, that person's bill would have actually gone down slightly because your overall AV would have gone up. However, because of that change in the the assessed value and the 17% drop that the district saw this year, this taxpayer's bill is going to go from $651 to $808 for 2025. Approximate, right, we're we're kind of, this is median home, all those kind of things, right? It's going to be different if their home's worth more, if their home's worth less. And again, we can always help with some of that analysis, we'll sometimes do as quartiles. But what we're saying is the overall bill is going to go up, and this is looking, we see the dollar 24. That is the current overall rate for Ohio Township residents. Okay, so that's what the other government units stacked on top, not just the schools. So you can see the rate moves from a dollar 24 to basically a dollar 48. And so then they're going to pay more in taxes. This also doesn't assume, this is a devil edged sword. It's, what we're saying is the assessed value of that home is the same in '25 as in '24. But I told you earlier, gross assessed value homes went up by almost 10%. So that home really in '25, probably more likely is going to be worth 153,000. And so the net assessed value is going to be higher. So they're actually going to pay more than the $808 at the end of the day. Now, you don't control assessed value, right? There, there's nothing in that piece within that, but that's just kind of what plays out. Well, then we looked at 2029. And again, I think this is that just drop dead scenario in that piece. The bills would move then from $808 in 2025 upwards to a little over $1,400. We did in this case, and you can see the top hand, right, we did trend some AV growth. So the very first line, the median homeowner goes from 138,000 to 155,000. That's because we said, okay, let's, we're going to have over this year, their their assessed value is going to go up. We need to take that into account. So that's why the median homeowner value went up, and that's the approximate math that would take place. So again, it kind of goes back to that pie at the, at the chart right at the beginning. As one piece of the pie gets smaller, and those dollars associated with that pie, piece of pie gets smaller, everyone else has to chip in more. And that's what this looks like, you know, for a homeowner, but I'm going to just get back, and we can go wherever the board would like to go with these. But I want to go back to this pie, right? Because this is what's happening. The residential piece is getting bigger. You, they're so far below the property tax cap right now because of that low rate, they don't ever, most of your homeowners aren't going to hit it, meaning they can keep paying. It's only when I hit that cap that I said I can't pay anymore. They're so far below what that potential would be is they have the capacity to pay, as does any farm or agriculture around and any other businesses have that additional capacity to pay. And so those, that's where the dollars are going to start to come from over the next several years. And I think the question will be how, we know we're going to be about $800. Right now, we're saying we're going to get to $1,400. What's that look like between now and then, and how, what's the stair step up with those potentially? So kind of summarize here, and then more than happy, any questions? We can talk through all this and look at some of the slides. I think, again, what this would say is the district, and this applies to the other governmental units, right? Within the community, so, because you all function the same way when it comes to the property taxes. There is capacity to pay that we don't get into circuit breaker, that should not impact your day to day operations or your day to day funds. Those, as we saw, stayed pretty solid over the next five years. But what changes in the community is who is providing the dollars for the district, for those community services, and it shifts especially to your homeowners and your farmland in this case. That's probably the overall message here is more of a, hey, my, you know, tax rates are going to go up and tax bills are going to go up over the next several years within that piece. So I know that's a lot, that's a lot of piece, I'm more than happy to.
Go back a couple of slides where you had it broken down by kind of like districts of.
I'm going to go and you tell me when to stop.
All right. It was like the first or second slide.
Oh, the pies?
Yeah, well, it it showed Ohio Township and each township within our district. And Rockport was broken out of Ohio Township, right there in the bottom. It lists Rockport City as a separate in Ohio Township, yet Rockport is in Ohio Township. Why is that broken out in your?
Because it just depends on the actual, and it can see it, the boundaries within it, because they have the municipal piece that's specific that doesn't carry over to all Ohio Township.
So, so going back to your last slide that you were showing using Ohio Township as a reference, did those numbers include Rockport City proper in it?
So they would have a different calculation, okay? So, and with them being at $2.80, where is that? When I showed the circuit breaker was going to come, it's going to come from people in Rockport City and like Ridgeland Town because they're already pretty close to their cap, that they're going to hit it. The reason we focused those last two slides is because 80% live in the Ohio, or 80% of your assessed value lives in that Ohio. But this map, again, we're more than happy to, Mr. Schneider, pull up more slides of more of the townships. The math on that last slide applies to all these townships, but all of the rates are going to go up. It's just going to be those that have the lower rates are not going to hit the cap. It gets really complicated when you start looking, everybody's going to have a different, depending on where you live. And that's the hard part for a board, right? You go out and you try and explain some of these pieces, depending on, because you could have people in Rockport City that may be at the cap already or close to it, and they may see very little impact on the tax bill.
Well, I think that's something that I think the taxpayer in our community and the people that we represent would want to see so that you're comparing apples to apples based on where you live within our district.
I've shared this with Mr. Schneider and that, and so, you know, it's there. Take a look and feel free to have him shoot me questions as they come up, you know? If there are some additional pieces and runs that you'd like for us to to look at, we're more than happy to within that piece. I think I would encourage you, I think the biggest piece, outside perspective, so take it or leave it, within that piece, right? Is to keep an eye on this each year. Because depending on how assessed value comes in is going to impact some of these numbers, depending on what happens in terms of the stair step potentially within it is going to impact that number. I think it's kudos to you, I mean, to be talking about this in September and having a sense of where tax rates and tax bills could be going come April, because that's when these bills will come out. Be, April will be the first time taxpayers will see that. You do have some time to formulate a little bit of communication strategy or a sense around this of having this knowledge. So I think it's, it's a credit to the board and to the district to look at this ahead of time because it's, again, outside perspective, this is as much about messaging and helping people understand as as much as anything because there is going to be some pretty good changes.
You're going to do an update. You're going to do another update to this information.
So we've got some initial pieces I didn't put in. So the engagement we have with the district, we we kind of did a, our, what we call our property tax analysis a month or so ago. We updated some of the pieces with here. It doesn't include all the data because it's about 40 pages worth of data, and I did more, bore you probably more than I already did. But it gets into some of those pieces. So yes, we have that, and just with the time it has been, I'll share those, Mr. Schneider.
I just wanted the board to know that we're coming.
Yeah, so we've got the 25 pieces, and then we'll dial this in in January. So by December, all government units have to set their tax rates. And so in January, we do what we call budget order update, which is that all the rates are set, and that will tell us exactly what revenues will be. Because the other piece behind it is if one of these other units are also raising their rates come next year, that dollar 47 may become dollar 54. Or if one of them lowers their rates, it could have some impact. So we want to take a look at that again, and again, that might be some of the conversation you might all have at the local level of what's everybody doing with their rates? Because you do have some codependency in terms of that, of what the actual impact looks like on a taxpayer. So we'll do that update there as well and provide that information. So, and then again, if there's some other pieces we can help with, we'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, I appreciate that, you coming in and sharing this information with us. Does anybody of the board members have any questions for Mr. Gardner?
As of right now, with what this data shows, with Ohio Township being as low as it is right, right here, and the AV loss being in Ohio Township, are those the people that are going to be impacted the most as far as being farther away from their, that circuit breaker?
So great question, so yes and. So they're going to have the most impact because they are the farthest away from the cap, so they have the most ability still to pay. It does still trickle out to the other pieces because as, when you raise your rate, you're not just raising your rate in the school district in Ohio Township, you're raising it in all of those, and the same with the other governmental units. So there is an interconnectedness of all of this at the end of the day. So all units, all, excuse me, districts will see an increase in rates. The most impact will be felt in those districts where you have the lower tax rates because they're farthest away from the cap.
So in essence, it'll be the four on, on the board or on the data sheet there? So Hammond and Grandview and Luce and Ohio Township would be it?
The, the rough math is, simplistic math, is once you get above $2 in a tax rate, you're going to start seeing for homeowners that most of them are getting closer, starting to hit the cap, where they can't pay anymore. When you start to get above $3, you're definitely collecting, then your 2%, which is your rent rentals, apartments, kind of ag situation. And then as higher you get up into the $3 range with your overall rate, that's when businesses start to hit the cap. So that's kind of the stair step piece. So it's not like businesses are the last to hit the cap. Homeowners are first in the current property tax system, and those are the rough figures. $2 gets a lot of your tax homeowners, $3 gets basically all of your apartments and ag. You get above three, you start hitting your businesses. So that's how that will play out. So when I look at Rockport City, I guess I saw that they're going to get above $3. So that's going to mean, again, most of their tax homeowners are going to hit the cap. So they may, again, they may see a $25 increase in their tax bill because that's all the room they have left to pay before the cap.
Do you have any further questions, or?
I have. Any questions you have?
Our two guests from AEP, three guests from AEP. First, I'd like to say you guys have been an awesome community partner and family of this community since the late 70s. I've lived within five miles and of your. I've lived within five miles and of your power plant since its conception. And any of this that we talk about is not in any way intended to be aimed at you all. You guys have been awesome neighbors and members of the, the community. But also at the same point in time, we have to be able to look at every piece of this, worst case scenario down to, to best case scenario. Just let you know personally, thank you for everything you've done.
And thank you for coming as well. Okay, no further questions, no further comments? Okay, it is 5:21. I would like to.